At Council of Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council of Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council of Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Okay, well, everybody, on the agenda, the first one's discussion of offer to buy procedures. What do you think?
Oh, I just wanted to get my colleague's opinion. There are many times, of course, we get unsolicited offers to buy from folks. It goes through the administrative process as to like issue to us as to whether we accept or not the shop owner.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, why not talk to you? And there are times, of course, where the offer might not be one that we can accept for various reasons, right? I think, though, that no matter the relative merits of an offer, any offer should get a chance to speak to us, even if there's a negative staff recommendation or we end up not improving. And I think everybody should, who makes an offer, should give their bottom half a chance to make their case to us. We get a lot of, for example, a business interest who come in and will, first reading gets accepted automatically because they get a right to look at your residence and ask them, "Why is he making friends?" Shouldn't everyone see that?
Well, I'm hoping, you know, I don't know, probably all plays into the conversation is that I know that Wendy's worked quite hard trying to get a list of properties out by the city, but I would hope that there would be a point in time that anything that is available for purchase would be listed as such, but I don't know where you draw the line. I guess somebody could quite realistically come in with a number by City Hall.
If it were for 50 million, would you jump it down?
Well, basically, that was the situation here. It's a piece of property that has no sewer, has no water, has no use really, other than storage. And so I was approached, maybe initially said, "Let me check and see." Called back, said, "It's not for sale. It's going to be used for dry storage by the city." The person then came to the city with a down payment check, which is commensurate with the amount they felt was appropriate to offer, and handed a check, and he said, "It's not for sale," and gave the check back, or have, will give the check back, I guess.
Well, I don't, I don't know that, really, we would need to see everything. I mean, the city staff is in place for, you know, a particular purpose, and they have job functions, and they, they could probably deal with situations like that if somebody's trying to buy something that's not for sale or it's just not appropriate. I guess for me, relying on, on city staff experience and expertise in those sort of administrative kind of details is sufficient for me.
I just think they ought to get a shot. Take, for example, the building, the old Fit for Life building downtown. I personally think, as it was written, it was a very good proposal, but they got a chance for a hearing.
Was that to be owned? Did we own that?
We don't even, well, we owned the ground next to it that would have been, yeah.
But they weren't one.
And it wasn't for sale.
Right, right.
So I just think if somebody, I think everyone should get a chance to make their case. It seems only fair that, you know, I think most of the time, we're probably going to agree with the staff, but if somebody's serious enough to put down cash, I think they should get their five minutes to make their case.
Is there any sort of grip policy or procedures concerned at this existence?
Well, I think that, as I told Nate on the phone, historically, if we have an intent to sell, then we bring it to the council and sell it. This is the first time, to my knowledge, where somebody went ahead and paid an offer when they told them the offer said.
Would it be prudent? I mean, I know from our, our council retreat a few years ago, one of the action items was to gather this list of city-owned property. Maybe it would be prudent to wait until that, that project is, is complete and we're in a, in a better position to determine the next steps and set forth a policy procedure.
That's not the question in front of us because in and amongst those properties, there are lots of properties that will never be for sale. There's pump stations, there's parks, there's facilities, which is what this is. So I guess the question that we want answered is, is it administrative and that we need the space for storage, or administratively decide that it's not for use, or is it up to the council every time somebody comes and wants to buy a pump station, or wants to buy a city hall, or wants to buy Bayless Park? You want me to put it on the council agenda and see whether or not you want to buy it or sell it to whoever wants to buy it.
Well, it would involve the mayor as well because presumably if we accepted an offer and disagreed, you could veto it. And so I don't think it'd be unilateral by the council. But if that's the case, I just want it to be treated equally. So, for example, they offered to buy the parking lot that wasn't for sale, shouldn't come to us either. Should treat people the same.
Well, the parking lot was, was for sale, as far as I'm concerned, based on certain conditions. It's not apples, apples.
I don't know, would we never sell a piece of property that folks are interested ever, no matter what they offered? I, I don't think we could, I don't, it's tough to draw that line. I don't think we're going to get 50,000 offers to buy every meeting, so if we did, that might change my answer based on just practicalities, but...
How many do we get? Do we, do we know? I mean, are the, we don't see it.
Well, again, I think this is probably the first time where we didn't have a property for sale, that someone said, "I don't care that you don't have for sale, I'm going to make an offer on it."
Okay, so this is the first time that's ever happened?
So this is the first time that you've seen every other one.
Okay.
Well, you know, as a resident, when I put in an offer to buy a city property, it wasn't for sale at the time. It went before the council, even though it wasn't for sale. Now, fair enough, it probably would have eventually gone for sale, but it wasn't.
Was it a vacant, something that was vacant?
It was a 657A.
Yeah, and that's, I was just about to ask that, you know, what about the case of a vacant lot in a residential area or otherwise that's been zoned for the appropriate use?
Yeah. I just take this, oh, excuse me.
No, I guess that, as the mayor points out, you know, that then it becomes a question, well, is it, is it up to the city to say, "Well, we, we don't want to sell it because we have a different use for it," or, or are people given, given the right to go through a process to make the recommendation? I guess that's, have I summarized that?
Yeah, I just think, I just think that people should get due process to be able to make their case. If it isn't a good case, you won't want them.
So when the, when we are finally to that point where we know which properties the city owns, which ones need to be sold, that are things the city's not going to use, doesn't have any reason to hold on to, I, I think that at that point, it would be a good thing to say that, okay, at that, we agree that these are ones the city's going to retain because they have use for, these are the ones that are going to go on the market, you know, and they are available for sale. But we don't, when we say, "Well, that lot next to Fit for Life wasn't for sale," well, we don't have a list of for sale at this point anyway, which has been part of the big problem, you know? It's like, we don't have a list of properties that the city owns, that they'd like to sell, that we need to get sold. And that's why I kind of agree with Lynn, that if we can get that in mind, then I guess we could all look at it and say, "Yeah, we agree that these on this list should be retained, and these would be the ones for sale." But it's not like any protocol was violated in that nothing's on the market for sale.
Well, but it, but it makes a difference because the rule ought to be the same, and I think that would be a very good rule. But if, if we're going to do it on a case-by-case basis now, you know, then, you know, somebody, the little guy who wants to make an offer, it may not be a good offer, but why should they get less of a hearing when we don't have a process?
The decision was not made based on a good or a bad offer. It was made on whether or not the building was for sale, whether or not the building had, when they put the interstate in, they disconnected the water and the sewer, so...
Well, I guess to Nate's point, sorry to interrupt, but to, but to your point about, you know, getting due process, would, would the, I guess in my mind, unless process is something different to you, and it may be, but in, in my mind, the due process, they made an offer and it went, came to city staff, was received, and due diligence was conducted by city staff, and then it may or may not come to us, but still, they would get some sort of a process, and everybody's treated the same way, if I'm not mistaken. Is that sufficient?
I don't think so because if, the people who should make the final decision should be the, you know, two elected branches, because you can vote us out, the administrative staff makes the recommendation, which we generally follow wisely, but if you disagree with them, what recourse do you have? You can't vote anybody out, you can't appeal, you can't, I just don't, I think there's a check and balance there.
Well, I guess if they're told no, they'd be able to come to the city council and put an agenda, right? Or no?
No, that's the discussion. If we don't have it, they don't have that right. I just don't...
They can't, they can't come at the end of the, like, we got a letter to be heard tonight, they couldn't do a letter to be heard?
Well, that's not really an offer then, that's just a complaint. And that complaint after the fact, when your offer's not even allowed to be heard, just doesn't seem...
Is there any limit, though, that you think that everything, like, so really and truly, if somebody did make an offer on Bayless Park, it should come to the council for review?
Unless, until we have a list so that no one can reasonably say, and I'm not saying that there is anything inappropriate here, but without a list, somebody could say, well, they got to have it heard because of who they are, whatever, and right now, we don't have an objective process to say, "No, it's fair because here's the list of things you can..." I just think it ought to be more objective. Because I think, I think the process is fair, I just don't think it's always seemed to be fair. So maybe, maybe that's all academic, if we just get the list done, and I know you've been asking for that for three years.
Yeah, and I know it's being worked on. I really think that that's the solution, and it's just that that needs to be wrapped up and completed, and we need to have...
Well, this, again, and that's what Lynn says, but I disagree with it because this property wouldn't be on that list.
Well, that's, it'd be on the list of the properties that the county, that's what I'm saying, they would list...
Then it would need to come to us.
Right.
Then it's objective, there's already a list, so no matter who you are, and I'm not saying anything is wrong in this case, I'm just talking about appearances and best practices.
But once the list is done, I mean, it could come up again that somebody wants to buy something that's not on the list, and then I think the question is, what's the process for that? And maybe it's something as simple as we, we set up a process, and it may already be in the policy procedure right now, is, is it goes to this person for, for receipt, this person for review, you know, X number of days for response? I mean, is that kind of, would that suffice?
I, I think so, and you're right, that the failsafe would be if someone truly felt aggrieved and wanted to speak to us, they'd still have the right at the end of the meeting, and if, I suppose, the majority of the council at that time said, "No, we want to hear that," I would think that the elected branch could force that to be heard.
Direct to city.
Yeah, so, but I don't think that would happen often. I just think there's got to be the, I just think there's got to be some steps in there because I think it's just perception and best practice.
Well, I think you raise a good point then. If you have that at least written out as an established policy or procedure, yes, then everybody can take a look at that and know where they stand going in advance of making an offer.
That's all I'm asking for.
So I, I mean, I would, I would agree with that, that, you know, and that, that would work hand in hand with the property, with the property list, once it is finalized, that this is, this is the process and the procedure. So I don't know who would work on that.
Well, if you wanted to do that, then it would take two council people to put it on the agenda, and I have to go around doing that, and you'll have to have some language, appropriate language to that effect, I guess. Would be my end. That is a...
Yeah, I mean, it could be discussion and then council resumption, resolution, establishment of policy.
So, do we, do we need to...
Policy, pardon.
Isn't it administrative, do we need to...
Well, apparently administration's out of the picture, so I'd say, "Oh, it's not administrative."
No, I'm saying I want, I want it to be administrative and have, and have city staff come up with, you know, 10, these are the 10 action, action steps. That's it, simple.
Because, because we're not trying to take anything away from, from city administration. We're just saying that if, if we have a set written policies and procedures, then, then everybody can all along in advance of, of making an offer or as the process proceeds, so...
It's not a law, it's not a resolution, it's just, it's just sort of a, here's the guideline, this is, you know, you have to do it.
Yeah, well, I'm lost, so if you guys have an idea, I just say, go ahead and run. To my way of thinking, if we need it for storage, and we decide we need it for storage, and people just say, irregardless of what the desire of the city is, we're going to make an offer, then you tell people under what conditions you want to do it. So I think you probably have the authority to do that.
Well, no, I think, I think you're a little, little bit off base, if I may. It's nothing to do with the, with the animal shelter or anything that transpired or leaves it behind, it's just that in the future, if somebody, if somebody wants to make an offer, this, you know, you send it to city clerk, city clerk stamps it, sends it to Don's department, he reviews it in 10 days and gets a response, that's it. It has nothing to do with us. It's just sort of a one, two, three, step-by-step thing for the general public. That's what I'm seeking.
Especially if it's not, if it's on the list of properties that we're willing to sell, I'd suggest that they do get...
That's pretty easy.
Yeah, I think then they do get a hearing. If it's not, if it's on the list of properties that we've not agreed to sell, well, then their recourse would be if administratively denied, and I think administratively, administration has a great process to plan that, their recourse is to speak at the end of the meeting, and whoever's on the council, whenever that happens, they, and the mayor, if a majority think that it warrants it, well, then there's a, there's a safety valve there, escape valve.
Yeah, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that will come before the...
That's exactly what's happening here in this, in this situation, so I guess I'm confused there.
Well, no...
So that's why I'm saying I don't want to write it because I don't know what you want. Here, here's a situation where you said the property's not for sale.
Right, and in that circumstance, it would not, I mean, contrary to what, you know, Nate started the conversation, is that wouldn't come to the council because here's the steps A, B, and C, and the final step is, you know, Don or whoever, the city says, "No, it's not for sale, it's not viable, it's not going to happen," and we don't see it or, or know about it. That's what I'm saying.
But I don't think that's what you're asking.
I, I, not originally, but I think that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, and I think it's for a property that's not on the list, which it just goes to, you know, the list, which I know it takes a while, but it's kind of, we've been asking for about three years, so...
Well, I've been here one year, and the list will be here within a couple of months, so you can't blame me for past this.
Oh, well, I'm not blaming you.
We've talked a lot of times. What do you think, your face? Because I'm tired of that face. I get so tired of it. Believe, believe me, I just get really sick every time.
Well, it's a very complicated, long-term project, and we knew that...
It's a, it's a huge project. We've had probably 15, I don't know if we had that many, but we had 10 meetings on. We have to, there are numerous, numerous, numerous properties that the city owns, little slippers, little pieces, are they important for this, are they, each right-of-way the city owns. And so to go through that list is huge, and nothing has been done until Wendy took that project, and Greg, and Larry, and Don, and, and we're close, but again, this isn't about that list or the properties on the list, this is about a building that wasn't for sale.
Well, but we, we just need a policy so that no matter who it is comes in, there's already ahead of time, this is, this is the procedure that applies to everybody, here's what it is. Right now, we kind of have a procedure, but not really, and certainly not written anywhere. We're focusing, that's not a criticism of you or anyone else, it's just, it is what it is.
You've got the authority to do that, but I'm not sure exactly what you want. And so to say, "We don't like what it is," and then throw it back in my lap to come up with a policy, I'm suggesting that you've got a policy that you want to see, that's probably appropriate for you to write down, because the policy you had to write may not be the policy you want to see.
Well, I think maybe as a basis, a starting basis, just write down what, what the process is today, what's actually happening.
What's happening is if the property's for sale, we bring it in front of you for you to make that decision. We've never had anyone who was told the property wasn't for sale, went ahead, made an offer anyhow.
Well, right, and that, that is very strange, in, in my opinion, but if it's somebody that's offering to buy Bayless Park, as was mentioned, then following some simple process, one, two, three, and then you guys determine it's, it's not going to happen, and we don't, we don't see it, we don't, we don't deal with it. It's handled within the city. That's, that's my point. I, I want those things to be handled within the city and not come to council.
Well, that's what we did, but that is, I just heard advocates. And so again, I let you do what you think's appropriate, so...
Well, it'd be the first time I've had to draft something without support, and I would be...
Well, again, I think you'd need a second.
I think there's a fair consensus that we want, whatever the policy is, whatever it is, should be in writing, not 50 pages, but in writing, so that somebody can't say, "Well, why did that parking lot," or, "Why did Nate get to have been on a property that wasn't for sale?" And somebody else doesn't. I just think everybody not only gets treated the same, but is seen to be treated the same with this.
And again, I don't want to take that out of your hands. What Lynn's saying now is that we basically handle it the same way as Ben here, and if we decide that it's not for sale, then we don't sell it.
But it's a, but it's a writing...
I don't think that's what you're asking.
If, if it's on a list of properties we're not selling, but right now, we have no list, if we're on the list of properties we're selling, they should get a hearing, right?
Maybe, maybe not.
Now, here's the...
Why, why not?
There's a lot more that goes into this because we haven't had a real estate president of any kind to get rid of our properties, and so here's the thing, is that if you, like with this building that the offer was made on, yeah, it could have come before the council, but I don't think it's, even if the city was wanting to sell, my problem with the way we're doing things right now is that nobody else knew that they could have made an offer on that building. So what I guess I'd like to know is, since this is an unusual situation where this offer was made on something that wasn't for sale, can we then just go ahead, knowing that this list is going to be ready in a couple of months, and at that point, there's still going to be, have to be decisions made on the, by the council about how we want to go about marketing and selling these properties? And do you think maybe Wendy would be able to bring forward some of these plans, and we can take care of that at the same time? And we're two months out, I don't know that we're going to get another offer on a property that's not for sale.
Well, certainly something we've discussed, and here are some of the discussion items. One, if it's a vacant lot, that's too small to build on, then that creates a particular scenario where you split it down the middle and sell it to either the property owner on either side of the lot, if they both want it, if they don't, they don't. If it's a buildable lot, then do you advertise it with the realtor? You know, once we get that list together, then maybe it's the time for an appropriate conversation. I agree with you, someone is the first person to recognize that there's value in the old animal shelter. Is it fair then for them to get in ahead of the crowd and, and shoot a low ball off them and get the property, or is it better to market it in a, in a marketable fashion? And when you do that, you run into, how do you deal with the realtors? Because you're going to run into a situation if you use one real estate company versus the other real estate company all the time, so do you rotate that?
And Wendy and I talked about that, and I had done, a couple of years ago, a ton of research, what, how other cities were handling it, and we can, you know, deal with that later, but I think that in, the course that Wendy is doing right now will probably result in solving some of these questions when those policies have been decided by the council. How do we want to deal with getting rid of these properties? What do we want that offer process to look like? That should take care of some of these questions, and, you know, there's going to be a big list of properties that obviously aren't going to be for sale, and I don't even know, I'm not going to sit and read every one of them because it's much wider weight and stuff. So I think it's going to be, have to, if it's not on this list of properties that the city knows are not being used or utilized by the city, you can make an offer. Now, if you want to make an offer on something that's not on that list, you know, are we, that's the only question we have left to answer, and I think we could go without the policy.
I think we know that the policies, in the meantime, I think, though, that if, in essence, we have an informal moratorium, it ought to apply to everyone. So, for example, you know, if there's, you know, if a business interest comes in and wants to buy, whoever it is, Nate should be told no, just like this one, because it's not for sale right now because we don't have this.
But there are properties, the city council would love to unload, there is a difference.
But that goes to your point of, we don't even know what those are, so the public doesn't, so how do we get fair market value? How does everyone get a chance to bid on it?
Well, one of the ways we would put it on the website, on the list of properties for sale on the website.
Oh, I agree.
So, but you're saying we shouldn't sell any more property until we get that done?
I think so. Just take, for example, that parking lot, somebody else might, at the moment, I doubt it, but we don't know that, somebody else might have been willing to pay more for it.
Well, since that's a property, you know, here's the thing, Nate, is that there's never going to be a block and light, and I know that it would be a wonderful world if it was, but there are parcels that the city owns, that it's not about price, it's about what you're going to do with it, whether you're developing a parcel. So you're not going to write a policy where it's always going to be absolute, because even if that was on the list of properties the city would be willing to sell, we're not willing to sell it to anybody to do anything with it. So there's still stipulations attached to this, to some of those questions.
Oh, I agree, it's complex. I just think, I just think that how something gets here should be determined by some objective criteria. I don't think we disagree really, it sounds like it's more semantics, maybe.
I just don't want to pass up an opportunity. If we have, you know, a property right now that is a vacant lot from a house that was torn down from 657A...
Sure.
I don't see any reason, you know, especially if it's not buildable and the neighbors want to buy it, why we got to hold this process, is how, so...
I'm not saying that it doesn't help if that's what you want, but I'm, I'm not sure what you're looking for, is all I'm saying, right?
I guess having, having that, that list in a, in a couple of months' time will be helpful because that'll provide some opportunity to study it and determine just how much of a problem this could turn out to be in the future, and if we need to make additional recommendations to help expedite marketing and sales, that's certainly appropriate. And to Ms. Grandag's point, again, having, having things established in, in writing helps remove the, the chance of outside challenges as well, because then we would have something in writing for, for everybody to see and understand, and I, and I think that's something that the, that the city is, is interested in, and taking more, more procedures out of the ad hoc category, moving them into where it establishes a process.
It's similar to the fantastic reform that within the executive branch, Mr. Mayor, you're doing with regard to procedures and efficiencies and written policies. It's tightening up our pieces of it, really. It complements it, it's certainly not meant to antagonize it.
I just want to make sure that we're not going too far into the micromanaging of city, you know, that's why we have people who work for the city to, to do some of these things, I just want to caution us as we move forward. It's a good conversation to have because the project is nearing the end, and, and, you know, there will be, there will be certain processes and procedures that, that will be put in place because now you have a list, how do you implement any, any sales? And one of those components is, how would you handle an unsolicited offer to buy a piece of property that's not on the list? So I, I mean, I just, I think that we've, you know, we've had a conversation and, and...
I'm not entirely sure of the answer, but right now, we, we kind of have, if we got a really good offer and we thought, "Oh, well, maybe we'll sell it after all," it probably would come in front of us, which would make sense, practically speaking, but then how do I tell some, a resident who says, "Well, I wanted to buy that, why didn't I get a chance?" And right now, I don't, I can't point to anything that says why they were treated differently.
Well, I figure that's probably good, that's a fair analysis. If someone came in and said, "I'll give you $100,000 for that building," I think we'd probably bring it in front of the council and say, "But the storage space would cost us $1,000 a month, and that barely covers a year's worth of storage space," so...
I'm not disagreeing with you on the substance of that.
No.
So I, you know, again... So, you know, again, you want us to put it on the offer to buy on the council agenda next time?
I think, I thought we had just decided to settle until the list is somewhat near completion, and...
Let's do that, then.
Anything comes up between now and when the list is to where we're at, to that point, may I maybe just send out an email, you know, because I don't want to, I don't, I really don't want it to get to the point where if we were getting rid of those offers that we're dealing with at council, and we know we're not going to sell a park, or we know we're not going to sell a fire station, or, you know.
Well, this one I don't think is in the realm of ridiculousness, it might be...
No, I know, I'm just saying...
It's not selling, basically. Oh, I agree, but, you know, is it a building that we're using for something else? Is the offer too high or too low? But I don't think the offer in itself, I mean, empty building, we're not currently using other than perhaps your storage unit, is ridiculous per se.
Well, no, but I'm just saying that you can't even buy a vacant info lot for a house for what that offer was, so, you know. It's fine, if you want, until we can get this process in place, if you want everything brought to the council, I don't have a problem with it. It's just that I do think that honestly, had I been staffed, I probably would have had the same reaction, you know, it wasn't for sale, reason, for storage, sorry, you know, I wouldn't have thought it was going to be...
I know, I just, until we get a process in place that we can point to, you know, if you were the one trying to buy it, or I was, and there was no process, and I don't even get to speak my case to the council as an agenda item, it would run me the wrong way, and I can't point to anything right now as to why that is fair. I'm not saying it isn't fair, I just, I think it ought to be written out, so everybody knows what their rules are.
Don, do we have a policy as far as timeframe to close on properties? You know, it's one thing to make an offer, and in this particular case, I'm not sure the person making the offer knew there was no sewer or nor water there, so the additional expense of that and arranging financing and those types of things is there. Do we have a policy when an offer is made and accepted that they close within a certain timeframe? And should that be part of it? Because in effect, you block the sale to somebody else and never be able to...
Yeah, of course, that would be right, yeah.
I just bit my tongue. We do have a policy, okay? It does need to be updated, but the city has had a policy on how we dispose vacant alleys and streets in other accesses for some time. It's pretty straightforward, there's holes in it, but typically, you know, people split them off nearby, it comes to us, it's circulated amongst departments, because I can't tell you whether a piece of park property or public works property is surplus. That has to come through the process. And that is intended to catch the slot in the subdivision that you're sitting there wondering, what, and you have it, but somebody will tell you, no, we've got a stormstop. So we go through that process, we formulate a recommendation, we send that to the client, we post a hearing, you have the hearing, you decide. Now, as far as to the question, as far as the disposal of the timeframe, no, we don't have a policy. It seems to me that there's, one of the weaknesses is that leaning to, and I think the mayor has alluded to that before I get into that. The other thing is, our policy basically says, you know, I'm making a recommendation, I could make a recommendation on the sign code tomorrow, or some other thing. The mayor does have the discretion to set the agenda. But he can say, no, you're not willing to put that sign code or this on, so I do think that that is established. But I think one of our weaknesses is, we do not go through a process annually where we are asking public works, health, you know, anybody who owns property, parks, tell us what is surplus, tell us what you don't have in this. So that gets on the list, and that list then is approved by them. And we go with the agenda. But part of our policy problem is, I forget, we talked about it, but you've got different types of parcels. You've got parcels that are, you know, plaid of record, has been split three times, and probably should be sold to correct that plaid. But you've got parcels that are not buildable, let's just say less than 40 feet, they should go to the adjacent neighborhood. The real question becomes on those, and is value, what do they really worth? That really is the issue, how to overcome that.
Don't we have a calculation, though, that we use for those?
Not sure.
But I would tell you, you know, Lynn, if you lived in a house, and I've got a 33-foot lot next to you, or not even that, let's say it's a 30-foot lot, what value is between you, what to you?
And 15 feet being added to my lot isn't going to increase the value of my property. I mean, it would be a negligible increase, privacy, noise.
But the calculation would be like a alley or something like, I mean, that's an existing calculation that is...
It's like selling carpet.
Yeah, that's what I was...
We've got to have those discussions later, until we get this, this initiative already done, I think that we can kind of... And I think our policy does need to be certainly be updated, because it doesn't take it into consideration.
Sharon had done a massive amount of research, and so, all in all, I believe, yes, it was before you were on the council, so you probably had some good information, of various things that can be done in other places, and even looked into how it applied to Iowa law, and so...
Pull that back out. You did quite a bit of work, and you have, of course, this is...
You have a lot more knowledge in this than certainly, certainly than I do.
So, I, yeah, I just think that we can take care of a lot of this, and I appreciate what Don is saying, that, you know, things are going to have to be categorized and determine, you know, what are the parameters for selling these properties, and I think that we didn't clear everything up, Nate, as far as if it's not on this list, it's not for sale, and it's not going to come to the council, so if you're not happy with that, then you would need to come and speak after a meeting, and see if you can get enough council people, then to ask if you draw forward, that's kind of going to be the...
That seems, that seems, that seems perfect.
And in the meantime, like I say, I think that I don't want to put a moratorium on sales, so let's just bring anything that comes in between now and then, and bring it to the council that we can keep and move forward, but I just don't want to...
Yeah, I think for that amount of time, I don't want us to overreach the board tomorrow. I agree, so then just having them all makes more sense. I just didn't know if that would be acceptable, but it sounds good to me if colleagues...
With the, I would say with the caveat that I'm probably not going to give a hearing.
Well, yes, I mean, there's a realm of reasonableness, yeah, of course.
So you want on the agenda the handle show next week?
I think, I think so, yes.
Yeah, I just want to be clear if that's what you want.
Yes, please.
All right. Review agenda. Anything on the consent agenda?
E, 3E, are they related?
Honestly, I don't know, Tim, do you know if the Hansons are related?
Which Hanson's are?
They're up in the face of the area.
Terry, I know they're not related, sir.
I know Terry Ensign, and I do not get into them.
Okay, I thought that was my other question.
Are there things on the consent? Do you need to move a resolution to a public hearing, is that right?
In front of you, I'm already moving it.
I didn't see anything on the write-up that indicated public hearing.
That's why, that confused me. It doesn't say anywhere in the resolution that it's a public hearing. Am I missing something?
Please refresh my memory which one it is.
I think it's...
Oh.
And that's what prompted my question to Dick, and there was someone in agreement that we're not even sure that a public hearing is necessary in this regard, so it's not the city that's, that's doing the bonding.
And it doesn't even reference a public hearing in the write-up.
I would agree that it's not needed, but it doesn't hurt, and so if bond council thinks...
It's a good idea, which I gather they do. Thank you.
Oh, it's the bond council that asked for it, not us?
He suggested it.
Suggested it.
It seems an abundance of caution, but it's probably not needed, strictly speaking.
So that, we're setting it for public hearing, or the public hearing is tonight?
It's ready for action tonight. We will have the public hearing tonight. Notice was published...
Okay, I mean, because the only difference is five minutes versus 10 minutes. It doesn't matter if that's what they're recommending, that's fine.
So any questions on the public hearings?
We do have representatives of Marketplace present, if there are any questions that your council wishes to direct to them.
Well, I have some questions for you, Dick, on this. You suggested in some prior correspondence that, that there is anticipated cost savings to the city, and going to the bonding route. I wonder if you had a ballpark on that, because at the same time, it seems like that we're taking on some rather heavy reporting requirements, and that there would be considerable amount of administrative cost associated with that reporting.
That is true. Essentially, the savings to the city is the amount of interest rate that the investor will have to pay on the money they borrow. It's presumed that they will have a much better interest rate on the bond, so we can net the 8.75 total contribution at a lower cost to the city end rate, gross rate, than if we, if they had to invest the money elsewhere. So we should be to the end of our investment in the project, our revenue stream to the project.
Okay. So I guess my question is, is that going to then dwarf the administrative costs associated with the reporting requirements, or?
Essentially, in the initial development agreement, redevelopment agreement, I should say, the city agreed to assist in facilitating the financing of the project. Administratively, the city has agreed to take that additional responsibility on it in this particular case.
Other reporting requirements, as I read it, are to provide them with an audited financial statement in a fairly short timeframe. We talked about it a little bit, in that we need to close out year-end, and typically that takes 60 days, and so then to schedule an audit and have an audited financial statement may be difficult to do, but it does allow us to provide an unaudited financial statement, followed up by the audited financial statement, requires us to divulge our debt obligations annually, which we prepare anyhow, I don't...
Okay.
And we talked a little bit, maybe we could juggle the timeframe, so we don't have to do that twice, that when we give that report in, that it would correlate to the time we do it for the county. And then the developer would have to provide the semi-annual information on behalf of the city, so it's not a huge additional requirement. I think we would have the, should have the year-end stuff easily within that required timeframe, unaudited, but I don't, I would anticipate we won't always have the audited financial by then.
Well, and I understand that many of the documents that we otherwise submit anyway, I mean, in other words, this could be pretty much a pro forma reporting requirement. I just, it looked rather daunting, this 123 pages worth of daunting, and I wanted to make sure that, that we're not assuming an obligation that in the long run is going to, in effect, be more problem than it's worth, and I'm hearing that, no, it's not anything close to that. So I'm interested, if you, if anybody has a ballpark with the, with the anticipated cost savings are going this route, I know that's a calculation.
I can sit down with the developer between meetings and try to come up with something there.
And, and it looks to me as though, judging from...
You did provide that, though, at one time, didn't you give a ballpark estimate of the interest savings, which was not seven figure, I don't think, but...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Hanson with Integral Realty Resources Corporate and Public Finance Group out of Kansas City. Our addresses are 1901 West 47th Place in Westwood, Kansas, and we are the public finance advisor to the developer and owner of the Marketplace project. Thank you, council member, for your, for your question about interest rate savings by undertaking the bond issue. It's a difficult question to answer, given that no one knows what interest rates will be going into the future. There is an important aspect of the bond issue that I would note, that over the period of the bond issue, it'll be a fixed interest rate that will be set at this time, and it's expected, though not known for certain, that we're in a rising interest rate environment, or could be in the near future. Interest rates are historically low, it's hard to imagine them going substantially lower, and while they could, what this opportunity allows us to do is fix that interest rate for the balance of the term of the TIF. So the current present-day interest rate savings are not substantial, but the interest rate that's essentially carrying this amount of money, i.e. the developer's private loan on the project, is fixed for a very short period of time, two years, and then it could potentially reset based on benchmark interest rates after that point.
Okay.
So there, this removes...
So this provides you with certainty, then?
Yeah, it removes some interest rate risk by undertaking the bond.
Okay. And it appears, though, from the packet, I mean, this is a, it was a template that was provided to us, there's a lot of blanks yet to be filled in. So you use a similar format for the other states, because this is the only Iowa project that you, that you have?
Bad dog.
Sorry about that.
Notice that the projects in the other state are, are your processes in those other states somewhat the same, and you've gone through the same, same issue?
Yeah, thank you for the question. The documents that you've seen before you are voluminous, as are, is the case for most bond issues. It was a team approach to develop those, those documents. A number of the documents were prepared by Iowa Finance Authority's council, who is also bond counsel for the transaction, Dorsey and Whitney. Some of the documentation was created by underwriters' council out of St. Louis, Missouri, and the underwriter is located in St. Louis, headquartered in St. Louis as well. So you see a mixture of documents that, that are each of those law firms' documents within your packet here, and it is, it is normal course for there to be quite a number of blanks in those documents. The underwriter has an estimate of where they think certain aspects of the underwriting will, will come out, but it is a negotiated offering, and one that the underwriter will take out into the market and query potential bond investors as to what interest rates, redemption provisions, and other aspects of the bond transaction will be, and it will be a bit of a negotiation from the time at which that offering document is circulated on the street, if you will, to the time at which those bonds are actually priced.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Why is it the microphone?
Thank you.
Other questions on public hearings? Anything on the resolutions?
On 6A, in the, is the federal, are the federal funds a done deal? I thought maybe they were, but then in the write-up, it mentions application for federal funds, so does this progress, does this project proceed? Do we know if we have the 80%?
Greg, this is, I meant...
Greg, this, this is, oh, I meant... Yes, we've already received the approval, and the agreement was before the council, so that, that number is fixed. Federal funds we will receive.
Okay. Because in the, in the write-up, it, it talked about application, not the actual award of the...
Yeah.
Okay.
It actually says both were approved for grants, but it does mention the application. I was just trying to give you a little background that...
Oh, okay.
We applied, we received the grants.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Now, we're moving forward with the project. This is the first step, executing the agreement with the engineer. We'll have another step with the contractor.
All right. Thanks for the clar...
Matt, if I could just ask you, if I may, on that point, could we get, and it doesn't need to be to scale or anything, but a lot of folks have asked what that intersection will look like, and quite frankly, I can't completely picture it either, but then again, I'm a very visual person. Is there something where we could get it, even if it's a line drawing and it's not to scale?
With the caveat that it hasn't been designed yet. It's all conceptual sketches at this point.
Sure.
We're hiring the engineer to actually design it. So, I hate to release a drawing that becomes what it's going to look like before we design it. So, I'll be happy to show you a sketch, but I want it to be understood that it's very conceptual and it is not the design.
That would be helpful.
Is there a way to generally describe how you'll be able to go right on red if you're heading, oh, boy, south on East Broadway from Canesville, or is it better to wait for the sketch, even though it, who can't hold you to it and won't?
I think we would have a better conversation with a sketch, but generally, today, it's a fixed straight line at Y's together. We'll have to bring a curve in and bring it more in perpendicular to the other one, to Canesville, and that's what'll allow that, that turn.
Okay.
I don't know if that...
Helps a little bit.
It includes a radius versus, versus a tangent line coming in.
Yeah.
It'll include a radius.
Okay. I see. To allow for it to be square up?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Other resolutions, questions?
I have questions on 6C. The, okay, so the, the total, the total estimate was 407,500. The bid only covers eight of the nine buildings. Why did they not bid the Parks and Forestry? And in the, the bid split, 242,218 is for the nine, eight of the nine buildings. So, the Parks and Forestry, Forestry building seems to be the singular most expensive repair at 165,000, et cetera, estimated. So, if you can give some background on that. And then, my final question is, insurance covers everything?
Yes.
Okay.
The reason that neither of those bidders bid that particular building is it's a fairly new roof. It's a manufacturer that you have to be certified to do the repairs for, and neither of those two companies were certified to do it. So, we will now go back and figure out how to get it fixed.
Okay.
So, they couldn't bid it without the proper certification.
And did we, did, did we know that when the bid specs went out? I mean...
I would say we, we would anticipate there would be more than two bidders, and some bidder would be able to bid all of them.
Would have been certified. Gotcha. Okay.
But as you can see from these bids, there's getting to be a lot of roofing repair work right now, so it's getting harder to get lots of bids.
And that one is the, is really the bulk of the money, is to repair that one?
I had, I didn't add them all up, Lynn, because we didn't have a bid on it, so I don't, I...
Well, I'm just going by the, the estimate of the project and then...
I don't have it with me. If you say it is, I'm sure it was.
Yeah. So...
It's got, it has skylights in it, which is part of the issue.
Okay.
Put natural light in the building and, and they were damaged.
Okay. Thank you.
Other resolutions, questions? Licenses and permits? Want to ask on that?
Sure. I understand, Mr. Michael Ronk, and I'm sorry, I haven't met Mr. Ronk. Oh, there you are, sir. Last meeting, there's some questions that a few of us had raised and wanted to give you a chance to speak to, particularly moving forward, what you intend to do.
Yes, Chris. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. I know there were some issues with the, with the bar and stuff and mainly what we're doing. I, I got more security on hand now, and then, of course, I have my bartenders and everybody, with anybody that comes in that might be a little too intoxicated, you know, have them realize that more and not serve them any alcohol. And then, obviously, get them a cab if, if they need to. We're just trying to make sure that, you know, none of that stuff happens in our resolutions.
Well, I very much appreciate that. A lot of times, folks, and by no means do you have the longest list by far of any of the issues. There are a few, but, and there always be some in business. I appreciate that. I really appreciate you coming and talking and being a proactive part, so I, I will be supporting your renewal this evening. Thank you, sir.
I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
We, we did have another, another property up for license renewal that had a longer list of, of issues, and the owner of that establishment sat down with the, possibly the chief of police, or definitely some people from the police department, to work out a plan of, of improvement, and there'll be follow-up. Have you taken the same steps, similar steps, or have you done it all just internally yourself?
I did contact the chief. Unfortunately, we didn't get to actually talk until today, when he came in today, and we talked a little bit today about what's going on. And I'm willing to make a workaroute plan with him if you like and go that, that route. Definitely no problem.
You feel that that's a prudent step, or are you satisfied?
I think we're talking apples and oranges in regards to the establishment.
Oh, I understand that, but...
This one, you did reach out to me, you did play phone with me. I looked up the incidents in particular, and there was only one where they're specific to the bar. The other two were incidents that either didn't, weren't the result of the bar itself, was somebody who was overly intoxicated, tried to get in, and then had a problem afterwards. Or in the other case, there was an assault from the bar. So, one incident in a facility like that isn't that unusual.
Okay.
I'm comfortable right now with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one last question. How, how long have you been in business? How long have you been managing this, this place?
We are now in our third year.
Third year?
We are in third year. We started April of 2012 is when we took over the actual business.
Yes, there are probably some lessons learned then, and...
Definitely.
I mean, anytime you're dealing with a, the liquor license, there's bound to be issues from time to time, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the applications, permits? Then we have Nora Fuller will be here tonight to talk to the council. Anything else the council would like to discuss?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
We'll see you at 7:00.
At Council of Savings Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity-safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Council of Savings Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council of Savings Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.